Good morning. Welcome to the second public hearing for the inquiry into road tolling regimes. Before I commence, I'd like to acknowledge the Gadigal people, who are the traditional custodians of the land on which the parliament sits. I'd also like to pay respect to the elders past, present and emerging of the Aora nation and extend that respect to other Aboriginals present and to people watching online. Today's hearing is being conducted virtually. This enables the work of the committee to continue during the COVID-19 pandemic without compromising the health and safety of members, witnesses and staff. As we break new ground with this technology, I would ask everyone to be patient through any technical difficulties that we encounter today. If participants lose their internet connection and are disconnected from the virtual hearing, they're asked to rejoin the hearing by using the same link that was provided to them by the committee secretariat. Today, we will be hearing from a number of stakeholders, including Ms Julia Finn, MP, Member for Granville, and representatives from the Western Sydney Regional Organisation of Councils and from Infrastructure Partnerships Australia. Before we commence, I'd like to make some brief comments about the procedures for today's hearing. While parliamentary privilege applies to witnesses giving evidence today, it does not apply to what witnesses say outside of their evidence at the virtual hearing. I therefore urge witnesses to be careful about comments that you may make to the media or to others after you complete your evidence here. Committee hearings are not intended to provide a forum for people to make adverse reflections about others under the protection of parliamentary privilege. In that regard, it is important that witnesses focus on the issues raised by the inquiry terms of reference and avoid naming individuals unnecessarily. All witnesses have a right to procedural fairness according to the procedural fairness resolution of the House adopted in 2018. There may be some questions that a witness could only answer if they had more time or with certain documents to hand. In these circumstances, witnesses are advised that they can take a question on notice and provide an answer within 21 days. Today's proceedings are being streamed live and a transcript will be placed on the committee's website once it becomes available. Finally, a few notes on virtual hearing etiquette to minimise disruptions and to assist our Hansard reporters. Firstly, can I ask committee members to clearly identify who their questions are directed to? And could I ask everyone to please state their name when they begin speaking? Could everyone please mute their microphones when they're not speaking? Please remember to turn your microphones back on when you're getting ready to speak. And if you start speaking while muted, please start your question or answer again so that it can be recorded in the transcript. But I will prompt you if that occurs. Members and witnesses should avoid speaking over each other so that we can all be heard very clearly. And also to assist Hansard, may I remind members and witnesses to speak directly into the microphone and to avoid making comments when your head is turned away. Right, with that out of the way, I can now welcome our first witness. Ms Finn, I remind you that you do not need to be sworn, as you have already sworn an oath to your office as a member of parliament. But would you like to start by making a short statement?
Thank you. The reintroduction of the toll on the M4 has had a huge impact on my electorate. There's a huge cost imposed on households and particularly on small businesses who need to travel around for work. But on top of that impact on households directly, it's had a huge impact on traffic on alternative routes to the M4. Through the adjoining suburbs, when people have tried to avoid paying the toll. The worst impacts of all were, of course, the deaths that occurred at the M4 off-ramp at the Church Street exit, which is the last off-ramp you can use to avoid paying the toll. And as is widely known, advice was provided to the government prior to the reintroduction of the M4 toll that it was necessary to widen that off-ramp or provide additional off-ramps to deal with the increased demand for the use of that off-ramp to avoid the toll. And that was ignored for a number of years. There now has been a widening conducted and that has reduced the number of accidents happening there quite a bit. But there was a period which resulted in two fatalities, but constant accidents along that stretch of road. Most of them weren't bad enough to result in being reported or recorded because they weren't reported to police and nobody attended hospital, which is of course how accident statistics are collected. But the road was just constantly strewn with bits of broken taillights and the people living next to it referred to that particular lane as Crash Alley and they were constantly being woken by the noise of rearenders. So it's had a huge impact on my electorate and people are still really angry that they are paying a toll on a road that they'd already paid off. Obviously, the toll was introduced and in place on that road for 25 years. Then it was paid off, the widening occurred. The widening itself has been paid off, but that toll will remain there for the next 40 years and has of course been privatised, along with the M4 East extension.
Thank you, thank you very much, Ms Finn. I'll begin questions with the opposition. Is that you, Mr Graham?
Thank you, Sharon. Thanks, Ms Finn, for your admission. I might just ask about tolls generally and the impact on your electorate. You're in the part of toll-paying Sydney. How are people coping? Is it getting too much? You're describing some of the reactions to tolls being imposed, but how are people actually affording these tolls?
It is incredibly expensive for low-income workers in particular, who need to use the toll roads to get to work. There's a big variation across my electorate and how much people are paying to use those tolls. So the average amount per year for people in the 2145 postcode area, so in my electorate that covers residents of Westmead, Wentworthville and Graystanes. And these are suburbs where you do have a lot of tradies. So people who actually might make more than a journey to work and a journey home, but might actually be going across Sydney to or between multiple work sites on any given day. The average amount those people are spending per year on tolls is $4,310. That's astounding. I mean, that's about 5% of an average income in Sydney. Now, a lot of tradies are earning above average incomes, but that also includes people who are earning much below average. You know, childcare workers, people who might be working in back-up operations in finance, all sorts of things like that. They're all paying an average of over $4,000 a year in tolls. It's significantly less in the other suburbs. Maryland, it's $1,578. There are still a lot of tradies in Maryland, but probably not as many as in suburbs like Graystanes. And in Guilford, it's less again, it's $931 a year. And in Granville, which is where a lot of people would be using Parramatta Road to avoid the M4 altogether, it's $798. And I think also people in Guilford are probably trying to avoid the toll as well, going on backroads to avoid using the M4. It is that bit further away from the M4 than those other suburbs.
And really, I mean, that's what the government would say. You know, if you don't like the toll, take the free road alternative. But what does that actually mean in people's ordinary lives? These are large amounts of money to be paying.
Takes twice as long to get anywhere. Parramatta Road is often at gridlock. I myself, when I'm trying to avoid using the M4 toll, I will use Victoria Road rather than Parramatta Road. But if you live on the south side of Parramatta Road, you're not going to drive sort of across Parramatta and all the way along James Ruis Drive to use Victoria Road to avoid Parramatta Road. Parramatta Road is a car park these days.
Yeah, it might be an option, but if you're trying to balance kids, work, ordinary life, it's not a practical option in your part of the world.
It's not a practical option. People do leave really early in the morning to go to work using Parramatta Road and it takes them a lot longer to get home, but I don't think it's a particularly practical option. And certainly not if you have to, say, drop kids off at school on your way to work. You would then, there's no way you would then go on Parramatta Road to get anywhere.
And turning to Crash Alley, this was, as you say, a bit of Sydney roadway strewn with car parts after multiple accidents as people sought to avoid the tolls. Is that a real sign of just how much financial stress that this is putting people under?
I think it really is. Like, people were queuing for very long periods of time, people were trying to cut in across the queue, which is actually what caused a lot of the accidents, including at least one of the fatalities. The changes there include some barriers to make sure people can't change lanes late. But yeah, that queue often goes back for a couple of kilometres and you often come around a bend, it's kind of a blind corner and you're straight into stalled traffic. So it is quite dangerous, but it's very much an indication of the number of people who are trying to avoid the toll. And it wasn't really a big problem until the toll was brought back. And the government knew about this beforehand. I remember back when I was the councillor on Parramatta Council, we had a briefing from RMS before they even started the project or even the planning for the project. They said that they knew they were going to need to widen or somehow address by putting in extra ramps the huge amount of demand at the Church Street exit and also the James Ruis Drive on-ramp. Now, I don't think the problems with the James Ruis Drive on-ramp have eventuated because there's just not enough demand to pay that enormous toll. The congestion on the James Ruis Drive on-ramp is a lot less bad than it used to be. But the problem at the Church Street off-ramp is huge. They knew that at the time. They also thought there was the need to put a Church Street on-ramp for traffic heading south from Parramatta. The reason they didn't proceed with that is it was deemed not cost-effective, as in that would put cars onto the M4 after the last toll gate. Well, that's my interpretation of what they mean by cost-effective. They weren't going to be able to have any mechanism for cost recovery for installation of that additional ramp. Not installing that ramp means that people now drive south from Parramatta. They turn right at the Crescent. So they turn off Woodbury Road on the first right-hand turn at the Crescent. They do a U-turn in the first driveway and then they are able to head north and turn left onto the on-ramp there.
It's potentially quite dangerous driving behaviour, really driven by the way these toll roads are integrated into the city's urban network.
So these are people who should be driving from Parramatta CPD down James Ruis Drive and on to the M4, heading west at that point, and pay a toll, a small amount of a toll, but paying a toll, which annoys everybody. Instead, they go down Woodbury Road, do a U-turn across a driveway and head west that way, which is quite dangerous.
You've mentioned Parramatta Road a couple of times. The whole rationale in a lot of ways for the West Connects project was improvements to Parramatta Road, potentially new residences, but a Parisian-style boulevard through the centre of Sydney. Have you seen any continental touches, any early signs of a Parisian boulevard as you drive on Parramatta Road?
Interesting you should say that because the mayor of Paris has just announced plans to reduce the speed on the shop-sale lease aid to Parramatta Road kind of levels, a maximum of 30 kilometres an hour. So she must have been inspired by our work, but not by the lack of beauty of Parramatta Road, only by the lack of capacity to move on Parramatta Road. There has been a lot of rezoning going on, there's been a lot of apartments going up in Granville. Bizarrely, Granville, which has been a major transport interchange for 160 years, is no longer considered one and it's been taken off the Western Rail Line, just as the government plans to put another 10,000 residents into the suburb. But there have been some high-rise units go up between the station and Parramatta Road and there's been rezoning of land on the other side of Parramatta Road and acquisition of some land for parks. But beyond that, no, the Parramatta Road revitalisation strategy hasn't really achieved very much at all. And the only thing in Parisian about it is the speed limit.
Obviously, this is the question we have put and will put to the government. But what is going on with the Parramatta Road revitalisation process that has been talked about for so long? It was meant to happen in parallel with West Connects. It hasn't happened, there's no visible sign of progress. In your view, what is going on?
Well, I think the government was quite deluded in thinking that they were going to be taking all these cars off Parramatta Road. You know, there's been thoughts of putting light rail down the middle of Parramatta Road or narrowing it to just one lane and slowing the traffic down and creating this sort of more of a pedestrian-friendly environment, having more activation at ground level. In reality, we've put heaps more cars onto Parramatta Road and it's just not viable to do anything that would reduce the capacity of it as a road. It's already not functioning very well at all. I was travelling back from the city on Parramatta Road one day and there was an accident on the M4 and all westbound lanes were closed and all the traffic was diverted onto Parramatta Road. And even at 11 o'clock in the morning, it ended up taking two hours to drive from Strathfield to Maryland.
My final question before I hand to my colleague is really just that point about the M4 widening. It cost $500 million. People using it, it really was paid off in the first year or two. That was one of the key findings of the last tolling inquiry conducted in 2016 to 2017. So it was paid off very rapidly, but the tolls are there. Previously, the toll booths had been pulled out of the M4, actually torn down. What do people in your electorate think of that fact that they're still paying the toll burden even though the road's been paid off?
They think it's a scam. They also think that they shouldn't have even had to pay for the widening because governments have an obligation to maintain and upgrade their own roads. They're furious about the privatisation. They would think that even if they are going to be paying all these tolls, then they should at least be coming back in the forms of schools or hospitals, not coming back in the form of returns to shareholders for trans-urban. They're very annoyed and they think that the announcement that $5 billion of the $11 billion sale from West Connects is coming back to Western Sydney is a con job because $11 billion of the value of West Connects comes from Western Sydney. It's, you know, it's less than half of what's, what should be actually a business returning funds to Western Sydney that's taking from Western Sydney. Yeah, no one buys this stuff at all. They're just annoyed that they have to pay it and they're even more annoyed that they're now going to be paying it to a private company for years and years to come.
Finn, have your constituents benefited from a wages explosion?
Benefited from a what, sorry?
A wages explosion.
No, their wages are frozen, just like everybody else's and a lot of them have lost their jobs during COVID.
How many of your residents have experienced wage increases on average each year of above 4%?
Just the ones who've been lucky enough to get promotions.
And I presume that's not that many?
I know some, but yeah, no, most people are doing exactly the same job they were doing three years ago for not much more than they were earning three years ago.
So how does your constituents feel about the tolls rising 4% per year, every year for the next, I think my colleague might correct me, but we're up for at least another 20 years of this?
Well, when you say the 4% figure, they often make comments about they wish that their salary was going up by 4% a year.
So the fact that the tolls are rising by 4%, but wages growth in New South Wales, I think, has averaged about 1% in the last sort of five years. We can assume that these tolls are just going to eat more and more family or families' budgets, can't we?
Yeah, and you know, these are all families who, if they've got a mortgage, that number probably has a 2 in front of it. So it's not even comparable, like, in terms of the numbers they're used to hearing every day, it's not even comparable with the interest they're charged on their mortgage as a percentage amount. 4% is a large number at this point in time.
And as a long-term fan of the businesses of Maryland's Road, I can only presume that the money spent on tolls is not spent on those businesses and other businesses in your area. Is that fair?
Yeah, well, certainly the prices on those menus don't go up 4% a year. A lot of them are charging exactly the same amount for that cheap delicious food that they were four years ago.
Well, Maryland's Road maintains the best Afghan food in all of Australia, in my humble opinion, but that's perhaps beyond our terms of reference here. Can I ask you also, as a person with a close connection to the Wentworthville community, the noise barriers in Wentworthville that were constructed as part of the West Connects project? As a kid who grew up listening to the M4's traffic from a couple of kilometres away, has the noise barriers in Wentworthville worked to save those residents the pain of having to hear a lot of traffic?
For some, but there's some poor people who actually live in a fairly new block of units who all bought off the plan. It's a block of units that fronts St. Tenere Road and it's right, it's all of 15, 20 metres away from the M4. Where the M4 goes across St. Tenere Road, there's a bridge and the barriers stop at the bridge. So these people bought off the plan, understood that there was going to be barriers there and they understood that it was being widened a little bit at that point and some modifications made to improve the flow of traffic from the Cumberland Highway. And those, you know, those things that they were building there. But yeah, they'd been given the impression that there was going to be an effective sound barrier. The sound barrier actually doesn't go across that bridge. So they are blasted with the noise of the M4 from, affecting pretty much everyone from the second floor up really, really badly because they're at the same level as the road. And it's unbearable. They've all lost $80,000 to $100,000 in a block of units that's only a couple of years old that was being constructed and with the unit sold off the plan as this was being developed. But we're all told that there was going to be a noise barrier and not to worry about it.
So the noise barrier was too short, was it?
Yep.
Right, and have the residents had the opportunity to have that addressed in any way, shape or form?
I've had a response from the parliamentary secretary and they said that it can't be done and, you know, no, too bad, sucks to be you, kind of response.
Right, right, fair enough. And that's, sorry, I know the area well, right? Like, so I can imagine it already was a busy, it was a busy road before the M4 aspect. Is that fair?
Yeah, yeah, it was, but it's been slightly widened at that point to deal with the improvements in the flow of traffic from the Cumberland Highway. And there was the loss of trees and a removal of some of the older barriers. But yeah, everyone was led to believe that the barrier would be continuous, not have this gap in it as it crossed St. Tenere Road.
Look, my final question before I throw back to my colleague is just about the West Invest aspect. My colleague did ask you about how your residents felt about it. But just moving forward, presuming that this fund actually exists and is new money, which granted is an assumption, have you had any further details about how your constituents could potentially have access to it? And what projects do you think could be useful from it? Like, have you had any information about how this fund is going to work, given that you are...
I think a good place to start would be fixing that sound barrier in Wentworthville. But no, nothing has been sent through to me as a local MP requesting suggestions of infrastructure projects that could benefit from that money.
Your constituency coincides with the Cumberland Council, is it?
Yeah.
Which is one of the major, most affected LGAs of concern?
It is. At the moment, it's got the third highest level of COVID infections. So part of my electorate is also in the Parramatta Council area, but most of it is Cumberland. And yeah, Cumberland's been particularly badly affected. Across the Parramatta region, there's been 20% of people seeking income support from Centrelink over the last few months, which is quite disturbing. There's, about a month ago, I wrote to both the Premier and the Minister for Health, you know, when things were really, really dire in our area. But yeah, we've been really badly affected. We've also had, even for the authorised businesses that have been allowed to stay open, rolling business closures because of COVID exposures at work sites. It's been really difficult for people.
So to the extent to which money from the privatisation of West Connects is returned to Western Sydney through the West Invest, which I've got to say, again, is quite the assumption, but basically, Western Sydney is being told to pay for its own stimulus programme. Is that unfair?
Yeah, probably. I mean, everyone's going to start having to pay the tolls again when they stop working from home. And I know the government's very keen to have people returning to offices so they can support the businesses in CPDs by buying lunch and coffee and stuff like that. But we're pretty much expected to dig in to our pockets.
Dude, I'll throw back to my colleague there.
I'll just ask a few questions and then I might throw back to you if there's time left. Mr Monkey, Mr Graham. Just before, I just wanted to pick up on that one question about West Invest. And yes, you know, on the assumption that this is in fact new money, which seems quite dubious at this point. If that money is invested back into Western Sydney, should it be in the form of construction and new sort of construction projects? Or is there, would there be a better way to spend that money in your electorate, do you think?
There's probably a whole lot of things that it could be spent on and spent quite wisely. I do think there's probably capacity to look at ways to get people back into work as soon as possible. There are going to be a lot of businesses that just won't reopen and the people who used to work for them are going to need jobs. There's the taxi industry, there's huge numbers of taxi drivers in my electorate. Premier Cabs is based in my electorate. They've been decimated by this government over a number of years. They've been offered an absolutely pitiful buyout of their taxi licences. Looking at providing retraining opportunities for those people or better bailout would be something that could be good. There's a whole lot of infrastructure that needs upgrading around the place.
What would be the impact of...
All sorts of things that could be useful. There's been suggestions of improving the water quality to bring it up to, you know, recreational standards throughout the Parramatta River and other places.
What would the impact be of, I guess, greater toll relief? Would that result in people in your electorate having more money to spend on local businesses?
Yes, that definitely would. The caution I have, and well, it's all done now, so that the amount we're going to be paying on tolls because they're privatised is going on forever. But I'm not somebody who thinks it's a great idea for governments to provide incentives out of taxpayers' money for people. Um incentives out of taxpayers' money for people to go and spend money with their preferred businesses being transurban. Um, now that transurban has this sort of monopoly hold on our ways of getting to work. Uh we're kind of stuck with that and it's probably a reasonable ask that some of that be returned in the form of toll relief. But it would have been better to just not be increasing tolls by four percent a year um forever and a day.
Yes, I couldn't agree with you more. I think um toll relief always comes at the um the expense of lining a, you know, a toll operator's pockets. Um in circumstances where if we hadn't privatised, we wouldn't need to. Um, just coming back to your submission, you talk um. Uh quite a bit about the additional cars on residential roads and that that sort of rat running. Um, is that, is that relatively widespread across um your electorate? Or is it in really in particular um areas? So um for example, to, you know, to avoid that church street eastbound exit.
Um, it's not about avoiding the church street exit, there's some of it caused. When people actually use that exit, um people aren't, I don't think people are leaving that road early to avoid the exit. Um because the next earliest place you can get off is the Cumberland Highway and that's just a bit of a nightmare. Um it's a really congested intersection. Um it has been upgraded a little bit as part of the upgrades to West connects, but I don't think people use that to avoid it. Um there's been particular problems with people coming from. Say around Greystones, Fairfield, all those sort of areas coming up. And through backstreets and all people coming up from Guildford who also try to avoid Woodville Road. Coming through backstreets of Granville, um so there were instances where people were actually unable to get out of their driveways. Because of the queue traffic through backstreets of Granville. Um coming down towards the Randall Street. Um intersection with Woodville, Woodville Road, which is the last place you can get on um to Woodville Road. If you're trying to avoid all those many, many slow traffic lights. Um because there is a bit of a rat run along the train line from Fairfield um to Granville. Also, there's really bad traffic on um Mona Street, running from Granville through to Auburn across Duck River. And at Wellington Road, it's also another breach over Duck River. Um, they're really, really congested and have been pretty much at gridlock morning and afternoon ever since. The uh toll came back. There was a plan to widen um Wellington Road. Cumberland Council was going to do that and then they withdrew the funds and decided not to pursue it. I think that's probably a project that could and should be funded by West Invest money. Um, but yeah, there are problems in certain points throughout the electorate where people are trying to avoid. The told part of the M four and um the invoice.
So coming back to that then, so with the M four, um. The toll had been paid, had been taken off in two thousand and ten because it was seen that the, you know, effectively that road had been paid for. Um, and then it was reintroduced um six, seven years later. Was that sold, sold to the people of um Western Sydney on the basis that. Um the toll was necessary for that widening of that bit of road connected to West connects? Or was it um presented more as a um this is part of the broader West connects transaction? Uh and that's why we need to tell.
A bit of both, but you know, people were very sceptical because certainly they're paid that that part off. And there was a lot of antagonism going back decades to when the toll was first introduced. Because the toll was only ever put there for the last three kilometres of the road. Um this bit which sort of joined from Church Street, um. Um for going further along, there was a sort of a gap and that was um. You know, done back in the late nineteen eighties and, you know, that created a whole lot of annoyance. Because the whole, the rest of the road going all the way out to Penrith had been um constructed and was in use. And then this small extension um was the part that actually had the toll placed upon it. So having paid that all off, to have it then come back again, really annoyed people. Um, and nobody bought it as part of the extension of the M four. They all just sort of saw it as the toll being put back on the part that they're paid for.
It's almost a road widening fee more than a toll road, isn't it? If that's all, if that's all was, you know, the benefit, um I guess, for the people driving on it. Um I will hand back to uh Mr. Graham um to finish us off.
Uh, Chair, I think that um we've really covered some good ground. Uh Ms. Finn, I only want to thank you for giving those um very practical. Um examples of what people are paying in your uh electorate when it comes to these toll burdens. Uh and just give you the opportunity to put anything else you wanted to on the record on on that matter. Because that's obviously fundamental to um where this inquiry is heading.
Um, yeah, I really do think that, you know, there's been. People have really suffered over the last two years in particular, um. And I do think that having no opportunity now to escape from. This four percent increase in the tolls year on year is just a huge impost on people. And there's got to be a way forward that can actually reduce. The impact that has on the ability of people to go to work um and live their. You know, live their lives, get around Sydney, um. Because it's, it's enormous, um. I think one of the productivity costs that people don't consider about. Both toll roads, also just that how long it takes to get around Sydney and how bad our traffic congestion is. Is people actually have fewer meetings in the day. Um it's less of an issue now that we all have Zoom meetings all day. But when people were going around either quoting for work as tradies or whatever it was, whatever type of business they were in. The amount of time you would give yourself for potentially getting, being late to meetings um has grown a lot. And it has meant that we're a lot less productive. We have fewer meetings in a day because we factor in more travel time. Um, if you try to reduce that by using toll roads, it costs you an absolute mint. If you try to use the other roads, you're running the risk all the time of not being able to get to places you need to get to in a timely manner. So, um, it's, you know, it's really important that we actually. Resolve some of these issues because it's, you know, the idea of spending more than three thousand dollars a year on tolls. Is just astounding. It's, it's ridiculous and it's really unfair. Um to be spending that much money on tolls. And if the alternative is potentially running late to things and having your boss be mad at you. Or missing out on um getting work because she didn't turn up to quote for a job. Um, it's just not, you know, not the way anyone can work. So we do need to find some solutions to these problems. They are, they aren't just academic left versus right, labour versus liberal, these have a huge impact on people's lives. And make it very difficult to function in Sydney without spending an absolute fortune, which you may not have. And you probably don't as a result of the pandemic.
Right, thank you for your submission.
Uh, thank you.
Thank you very much, um for, yes, for your submission and your time and for um presenting the views of your um of your electorate so well. Um, I don't think there were any questions taken on notice, but to the extent we have supplementary questions, the committee secretary will be in touch. Uh and there will be twenty one days to respond. Um that concludes this session. We are going to break now until twelve o'clock. Um when we will come back with the second session of this hearing. So um I remind members to uh to turn their their videos off during that time. Uh and we'll be back at twelve o'clock. Um I think we can get underway. Um so welcome back, um half an hour later than I said we were coming back because I got it wrong earlier, apologies. Um we were intending to start at twelve thirty and we have. Uh so we are going into our second session of the hearing. Um if I could ask you, Mr. Dwyer, to please state your name and position title and then swear either the oath or the affirmation.
Yeah, happily, my name is Adrian Dwyer and I'm the Chief Executive Officer of Infrastructure Partnerships Australia. And I will use the affirmation. Um I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given. By me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Thank you very much. And would you like to commence with a short opening statement?
I would please, thank you. Firstly, I'd like to thank the committee for inviting me to present on Infrastructure Partnerships Australia's submission to this inquiry. By way of background, we're an independent think tank and member network, providing research focused on excellence in social and economic infrastructure. We exist to shape public debate and drive reform for the national interest. As the national voice for infrastructure in Australia, our membership reflects a diverse range of public and private sector entities, including infrastructure owners, operators, financiers, advisors, technology providers and policymakers. This diversity ensures our independence and enables us to advocate without fear or favour for reforms which best serve the interests of infrastructure users and taxpayers. Including on issues related to road tolling and road pricing more broadly. Since our inception, Infrastructure Partnerships Australia has been a strong and consistent advocate for reforming how roads are priced and funded. While our support for these reforms has not wavered, the case for road reform and the benefits that could flow from strong public policy leadership in this area have only grown. Our submission puts forward a proposal for reforming toll road pricing that would deliver broad ranging benefits for toll road users and non-users alike. From the outset, it is important to make clear that without tolling, many of the nation's most significant and economically valuable road corridors simply could not have been built. Or their delivery would have been severely delayed. The facility-based approach we have used to date has been highly effective to deliver the current network. However, now that the network is substantially built out, we have an opportunity to pivot to a system that better serves the interests of future users and taxpayers. To date, planning and delivery has been undertaken on a project by project basis. With the pricing structure reflecting the cost of financing, designing, constructing and operating individual portions of the network. The result is a system which lacks fairness and consistency. This has only been compounded by the M five cashback and toll relief schemes, which are frankly bad policy. While schemes like M five cashback are electorally convenient, they add further distortions to an already complex system. Delivering benefits to a small number of users and concession, and the concession holders of those tolls at the expense of other taxpayers. In line with our submission, we believe rationalising tolling while maintaining revenue neutrality across the network could yield substantial benefits for all transport users. Aside from improving fairness, a holistic approach to pricing across individual concessions could provide governments with a powerful tool to integrate toll roads within broader network planning. And with the inclusion of features such as off-peak discounts, this model could help to spread demand and extract more from the existing network. And delaying the need for new roads or new capacity. Should reform progress, the interests of users would need to be priorities. The prioritised while the legitimate commercial interests of existing toll road owners and operators would need to be protected. Any rationalisation of toll road pricing would need to safeguard toll road users against unreasonable increases in road charges on an individual basis. And ensure tolls reflect a best for network pricing structure. Finally, any reform to the current road tolling model would need to be clearly explained to the public to ensure that benefits and trade-offs are understood and accepted. I think everybody in this virtual room would agree that we can and should move to a better model for toll road pricing. I believe our submission provides a pathway to get there. Once again, I'd like to thank the committee for the opportunity to present today and I'm happy to take questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dwyer, um and I will commence with questions from the opposition. Mr. Graham?
Right, thank you. Uh Chan, thanks for your uh submission. I think again, it's a really um. Uh thoughtful and helpful uh discussion about some of the principles that underlie the um way that we might. Um deal with these issues over time. You, your submission to the last inquiry really put the issue of network tolling on the agenda. Uh at the time, that was um, you're one of the few groups really raising it strongly at the um. Uh inquiry, uh since then, it's become clear we have a network of toll roads around Sydney. We're heading to fifteen by twenty twenty-three or twenty twenty-four and that's now much more part of the public discussion. Um, so I, I want to thank you firstly for that. Um how do you see the changes you're calling for in this submission? Uh interact with the move to electric vehicles in particular and the road user charge, which is envisaged there?
Um well, thank you for acknowledging the contributions we've made. I think there's been three inquiries now that we've made submissions to the New South Wales Parliament. On this issue, I've done a, a, a research paper on specifically the Sydney toll network. And all have been consistent over that time about saying there is a, a, a better approach to this. And in particular, the more toll roads we add to that network as the system is built out. Um the, both the opportunity and the need to make those reforms increases. So I think it's um it's welcome that it's, it's continually coming back for inquiries and impressing the case for reform. Um on, on the question of um electric vehicles and the rise of electric vehicles, we've had a, a separate policy programme around how we can integrate electric vehicles into. A broader road user charging reform, but I might just take a step back from that and talk about broader road user charging that we've um pursued as a policy case as an organisation for. For sixteen years, uh around having a, a better, fairer, more sustainable, more efficient system for charging for road use. Uh across all vehicles, not, not just electric vehicles. And we've um published a number of pieces of work on that subject with various partners over time. And and the um road user charging for electric vehicles that's um currently proposed in a number of jurisdictions. Is um probably the first um credible step on that journey towards a broader road user charging model.
How important do you think that um uh some of those changes might be to changing how these roads are used? Some of the evidence we've had to the inquiry is that with the introduction of the toll roads with the current pricing. We're actually forcing freight, forcing trucks off these toll roads into suburban streets. The exact opposite of, well, the exact opposite of what was promised, but also the exact opposite of really what you'd want these. Roads used for from a productivity point of view, we should have trucks freight using these roads. But the evidence so far has been it's, the price is out of alignment with the um, uh with that happening. Um how fixable, I guess, is my, my question. Do you see that issue?
Yeah, I think that um, I think it's pretty clear, obviously, that the um. The freight industry and and us as ultimate customers of the things that the freight industry is moving have been beneficiaries of the told motorway network. For exactly the um the benefits that you've mentioned around getting those um vehicles on to. Uh roads that are fit for purpose and in particular roads that mean that as a, as a delivery company, you can make more deliveries in a day. And you can do it in a safer and and more dependable way. So it's certainly true that they've been the beneficiaries of the told network. Um, I think that a- as for reform of that, I think we should have be, we should have a broader conversation about what we can do to integrate tolls across the network. But that will have to reflect, you know, that the um heavy vehicles have a higher impact on the network than light vehicles do. The roads need to be built with a um a high degree of capital cost to support heavy vehicles. And that should be reflected in the toll that is charged on heavy vehicles. I think it would be seen as unfair if, for instance, a heavy vehicle. Uh be double paid the same as a, as a Hyundai Gats, for instance.
And how important do you think the time of day tolling might be to that? Again, um you don't want those. Uh you want freight uh using the most efficient network. You probably don't want it at the same time as. Uh parents are moving kids around after school or during peak hour. Uh there's not, there's time of day tolling only on one route at the moment. Rumours that might go. Uh how important is time of day tolling to the future tolling arrangements for Sydney if we were looking at this at a first principle point of view?
I, 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 I might just, um as a supplementary to the question, say that there is time of day tolling on one um portion of the network. But the delta between time of, the, the peak and off-peak is, is relatively small. And and therefore has pretty limited impact in terms of changing behaviour. I, I, I think it's crucially important. It's important because it means that if you can, if you can shift demand across a, a broader period of time. And appropriately do that, it means that we defer the need to build additional infrastructure. Um it, it is, uh it's pretty clear across our whole road network, not just the told network, that it's um. Parts of that network are congested for two hours a day and we build capacity to meet that two-hour congestion peak. And then for twenty-two hours a day, they're, they're chronically underused and that's um, that's an extraordinary waste of. of time, effort and investment into those roads. We think there's a big opportunity for off peak discounts, particularly for heavy vehicles to start to shift that demand to outside of peak hours, which would benefit not only the heavy vehicles, but would also benefit other users of the network.
Right, thank you. And I might just ask about the section of your submission that deals with improving access to data. You say this could really be important to governments, to transport users. The ACCC took a similar view as the first branch of West Connects was sold. There were some improvements to the public data. In fact, many of the toll trips on Sydney roads are now published publicly, a record of those. But you're really calling for this to go further in terms of the information that could be accessible. How important is this? What else could we do?
Well, I guess our broader view is monsters live in the dark. And if we shine some light on them, we'll reveal that monsters don't exist. Our views don't just relate to the told part of the network. We have a broader view that there is an overall benefit to releasing as much information as possible about the way our roads are used. And protecting legitimate commercial interest is absolutely appropriate. But as far as possible, we should err on the side of the release of data where we can, because that helps better inform all stakeholders about how our roads are used and how they need to develop into the future.
Great, thank you. And I might hand to my colleague at that point.
Thank you. Firstly, I also just thank you for the quality and the calibre of your submission as well. Practically, what do we need to do to shift to a network pricing model?
Oh, well, I think at a strategic level, I think there needs to be a grown up conversation with the community and with the concession holders. And as we've said in our submission, and in fact, the last two submissions we've made to similar inquiries, informal discussions that we've had with the concession holders suggest that there is appetite to have a reform discussion about the way that charges are applied across the network, the underpinning methodology behind them. I think, of course, as members of this committee would know, those sorts of conversations with the public are quite complex to have. And the discussion around winners and losers will always be brought to the fore. I think that's why, again, transparency is hugely important in how that's debated. In terms of the specifics of how a new methodology might be applied, we've suggested things like distance based charges or zonal charging, or effectively charging for the journey rather than the specific roads that someone travels over as part of that journey, which is currently made up of different concessions. And as we said in our statement, that's led to some deeply unfair outcomes in the existing system. But of course, because they exist, they are to some extent accepted. Change is hard, but I think that we're at an opportune moment now to begin that journey.
Just on that, what you talked about in your submission and what I think you just made reference to now as to what should those principles be? They seem like it's more about rationing access to the network as opposed to recovering the cost of building the infrastructure. Can you talk us through the difference there? Should we be tolling the network to really recover the cost of rebuilding it? Or should we be using this as a pseudo form of the introduction of road user charging?
So just so I can clarify the question, Mr Mc, you're talking about our position on this issue. Yeah, I think it's essentially a balance of the two. The current model has been very focused on the build out of the network. As I mentioned, the toll set at a particular time reflects the cost of designing, building, maintaining and operating that particular part of the network at a particular point in time through a competitive process. And the result is this patchwork of different tolls and then the unfairness in that exacerbated by things like cashback and toll relief schemes. We're at a point now where we can move to saying that network is built out. And as long as you do some rebalancing across the network, it can be used as a way of having a pricing model that is best for network outcomes. And to Mr Graham's point, that could reflect things like off peak discounts to reflect better use of the network across the twenty four hour cycle, but also reflect that a journey on the M seven has a different value to a journey, say, on the eastern distributor.
But Mr Dwyer, what I'm putting to you is that that would require us to really reset the reasons why we struck the tolls the way we have so far in that we have struck them to both recover the cost of construction, but also to recover the cost of attracting private capital to, who are willing to bear the risk for a long period of time, to put it generously. I'm trying to understand how we would strike the balance if we were to reconfigure the network. So it's about principles you describe. You do accept that we still have to strike a, well, if we perceive this particular model arrive also at a result that would recover the cost of construction and attract private capital who are willing to carry the risk.
Yes, I agree with the premise in the question that we would have to have a structure that accounted for the risk taken by those that have built the toll roads. But I think we can move to a point where we can, we can do that and have something that manages demand and takes account of building additional capacity into the future.
What about the principles that are in the existing system around how tolls escalate? We have some roads that recover according to CPI. We have some roads that recover according to a fixed escalator of four percent. We have some that do a combination of the above, some that peg to, or notionally are meant to peg to wage increases as well. What about those style of affordability, caps and limits in your network pricing structure? How would you see them translating?
So I think it's an important issue you raise. It's worth just unpacking how infrastructure is delivered. So at a point government decides to build a particular piece of, in this case, road infrastructure, that is paid for either by users or taxpayers. They're the only pots of money available. And where government makes a decision to have a told road, it has some options in front of it, essentially four levers. It has the starting toll, any capital contributions on behalf of the taxpayer, the escalation rate of the toll and the concession length. And if you move any one of those levers, the others move themselves to self level to get the appropriate amount of money required upfront to build the piece of infrastructure. So for instance, a lower starting toll might require a different escalation rate, a higher capital contribution or a longer concession. A higher escalation rate might reduce the upfront capital contribution. It might reduce the starting toll. It might make changes to the concession length. But ultimately, it's a zero sum game that needs to be made up through executing one or more of those levers. So I agree with the premise of the question that this patchwork exists, but it's also not something where simply reducing the escalation rate is an isolated impact. The other levers would have to be adjusted to recover the costs of building the road.
Look, I accept that.
Mr Mc, your time has expired.
Oh, it's disappointing. Sorry, Sharon.
No problem at all. I just wanted to pick up on the discussion on the EV tax, the road user charge. The, I guess, the scheme that's been put in in Victoria, as well as the one that's being proposed in New South Wales, is effectively introducing a road user tax for all vehicles, given that we would expect, given, you know, the market, the way the market is moving, the way that the major car manufacturers are going, that we won't have anything but EVs within sort of ten, fifteen years. Do you agree with that?
Well, I don't know about the timeframe, but I certainly agree that it would be our hope that ultimately we move to an entirely electric fleet for the broader benefits that that's brought. And with that, a road user charge that can ultimately pay for, for roads to be provided into the future. Our proposal, I should add, suggested that the revenue raised from that should be dedicated to broader transport, not just road use.
How does that then fit in with the existing toll road system? Is the idea that people get told effectively twice?
So in effect, that's what exists now for fuel excise. So someone driving over a told road pays fuel excise while driving on that road. It ultimately, a policy decision for governments. But right now, there is a de facto not very good road user charge through fuel excise that's paid by other users. And a distance based charge for electric vehicles would effectively replace that not very good road user charge.
I, yes, I think some of that perhaps I agree with, but I think in terms of the idea that a road user charge would replace the fuel excise levy is a bit of a furphy. Given that there are very different impacts depending on the fuel efficiency of your car. There is, you know, it does not, that levy does not apply equally depending on the distance travelled in the way that the road user charge is intended to. And the way that we have the fuel levy set up, which of course is a federal charge, whereas the road user charge will go into the state coffers. The road user charge doesn't incentivise any sort of efficiency in driving or, or the source of energy, does it?
So I agree with the premise in your question that the existing fuel excise is not a very good road user charge. It's deeply flawed, it's deeply regressive. It means that those can access more modern technology, pay less to use roads than those that only have access to older technology. It penalises regional users who have to travel larger distances and typically have heavier vehicles and travel on less well maintained roads. So there are a number of deep flaws with fuel excise. My view is that in creating a new system, we shouldn't transpose those flaws. We should make sure that we've got a more sophisticated system. The proposal we put forward had options within it to take account of things like weight and safety impacts of vehicles. I think those options remain available to governments down the line. But we also felt it was important that there was this moment in time where we would be able to actually begin that journey towards a rational road user charge. And we've been pursuing road user charging as a concept for fifteen years. We're in good company. The Industry Commission first said in nineteen ninety one that road user charge should exist. The Productivity Commission, the Henry Tatch Review, Infrastructure Australia, pretty good on this.
So in terms of, I guess, in terms of, again, I just wanted to unpick this idea that somehow, because you see this a lot in the media, this idea that it's unfair that drivers of EVs don't pay the fuel excise levy. Can I just, I guess, draw the comparison between somebody who is using a, you know, a petrol car that has, and paying the fuel levy, a highly polluting source of energy versus somebody who, for instance, is charging their EV at home using their own solar panels. Is it fair, do you think, for that to be equated as being only about, I guess, the for it to be seen as a replacement when it doesn't take into account the other costs of the fuel?
Yeah, I think, I think you've raised an important issue. I should say from the outset, I'm a strong supporter of a carbon price. And I think it's a disappointment that we don't have a carbon price because that would to some extent offset that, that perspective. But we've also argued that a road user charge for electric vehicles should be combined with conspicuous upfront incentives for the purchase of electric vehicles. I'm pleased to say that the proposal in New South Wales and the proposal that's been legislated in Victoria both came with upfront sticker price incentives attached. And that's because the principal impediment now to the purchase of an electric vehicle is a higher sticker price than the relative internal combustion engine vehicles. So the best way to accelerate it is to actually incentivise the purchase of an electric vehicle and you benefit over the life.
Which perhaps was true a couple of years ago. But I think we are now seeing the price become very, very similar on these models. But more importantly, the amount of the road user charge. So for example, the amount I drive, if I was to have a road user charge, it would cost me around thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred dollars a year in that road user charge, whereas stamp duty on a, you know, an average electric vehicle of, say, forty five thousand dollars would only be thirteen hundred dollars. So that's not really much of an incentive.
There's also a sticker price incentive in both Victoria and New South Wales of three thousand dollars on top of that as well. But I might add, for the, for the number of kilometres that you're travelling in an internal combustion engine vehicle, you're paying a vastly higher sum in fuel excise than, than you would be in the road user charges currently proposed.
So that, and that is one of the reasons why someone would buy an EV, so they didn't have to pay that charge. That's, that's been, you know, one of the great offsets of the, of the price. I am going slightly off topic, so I'm going to just bring this back to the submission. Just generally in the idea of a road user charge, which I like to call a proposal to make every road a toll road. At what point did it become acceptable for us to think that roads had to be paid for by users rather than out of general revenue? Why is that now something that we feel that we need to do?
Well, I couldn't answer specifically when it became acceptable, but I think there's a good economic underpinning for the idea of a road being a direct user charge on the beneficiary that used that road in the same way we do for water networks and electricity networks. It's quite easy to identify the direct beneficiary of the provision and use of a road as opposed to other sorts of infrastructure, such as social infrastructure, where there's much more diffuse societal benefits and therefore a stronger case for society subsidising or fully paying for those. And you'd say public transport straddles both those areas, which is why we have a pricing model that recovers about twenty five to thirty percent of public transport use versus the rest that's paid for by taxpayers. So there's a continuum across infrastructure.
Having a strong transport and road network is vital for the good sort of economic running of society, wouldn't you agree?
Yes, that is absolutely so.
I would view schools and hospitals in the same category. What makes roads different to schools and hospitals when we're talking about them needing to be user pays as opposed to paid out of general revenue?
Yeah, so it's really a discussion, twofold discussion. Part, as I mentioned, on the relative diffuseness or specificity of the beneficiary flow that exists from use of a road versus a different type of infrastructure. And more broadly, by having a user pays model on those areas where there is a more direct beneficiary from the provision of that infrastructure, it means that there are fewer discussions which decide between this hospital or school and that road. And I think that by being able to say, well, these beneficiaries of this road will pay for this road, that doesn't draw on the broader tax base. And that's a feature of, of the facility based tolling model that's delivered a series of roads in Sydney that are hugely economically beneficial, delivered well ahead of when they would otherwise have been delivered and them not in impacting funding for other areas of government priority.
You say in your submission, and we've seen this, another submission on our first day of hearings, made a similar point, that there is, basically, these roads couldn't be built if they weren't toll roads. Given that Sydney is the most told city in the world, what is it that our government's doing with its finances that make it unable to pay for these roads itself? Every other city seems to be able to build new roads without making them toll roads to the same extent. What's happened in Sydney that we can't afford to, I don't know, borrow, borrow funds and keep these in public hands?
So just to be clear about what we said, we said that they either wouldn't have been built or their delivery would have been delayed because there would have been other calls on government money. So we, just to clarify, we didn't say they wouldn't have been built. We said there's a combination of either delay or decisions that would have been made differently. On the degree of tolling in Sydney, well, the tolls are associated with the roads, the roads have been delivered and we've got a very sophisticated suburban told motorway network. I, I'm not sure about the most told city in the world. I think Singapore's probably got a much stronger claim to being the most told city in the world.
Second most then. What is it that we're doing wrong?
I think London's congestion charge might be up there as well, given that it's an area based toll. But I dispute the premise that we're doing something wrong. I think there's been a policy decision from governments to recover the cost of delivery of, by the way, governments over a number of decades, recover the cost of delivery of a road from tolls rather than the broader tax base. And the principal benefit of that beyond bringing forward the delivery of the road is that it means a taxpayer in Wagga is not paying for the M five. Except right now, they are paying for the M five because they're paying for cash back to me when I use it. And that's not fair.
And then we get into a discussion about whether we should have regressive or progressive taxation. And I can accept that that might just be an ideological debate that we don't have time for. I think in your submission, you talk about how when we have tolls, it's okay as long as there are alternatives. So I think your statement is road users who could take a toll road but opt not to can use other roads which are free. That's not universally true though, is it? What's your view on the Pennant Hills Road scenario, for example, where trucks are forced to use the Pennant Hills Road? Sorry, forced not to use the Pennant Hills Road and instead use North Connects?
Yeah, I think that there's a policy decision that's been made by government there to, um, direct, um, heavy vehicles on to the, the told corridor for the, the broader benefits that exist from taking them off a, a suburban road. But for the most part across the Sydney work network, there are free at the point of use alternatives. Um, and I deliberately use the term free at the point of use because they still ultimately have to be paid for. Infrastructure i- in any form ultimately has to be paid for either by users or taxpayers. But, but you've highlighted a, a huge degree of unfairness. So if we look at someone travelling from the northwest to the CBD, they're using, um, the, the M2, um, the Lane Cove Tunnel and a Sydney Harbour Crossing. Meanwhile, someone travelling from the southwest of Sydney travels over the M5 and they can ultimately claim cash back for that journey. So they're not paying a toll. So that, eh, I think these are just further issues that exacerbate the lack of fairness that exists in the current system and further the case for reform towards a more integrated approach.
My time has unfortunately run, run out, so we'll have to agree to disagree. Um, moment's time, who would, uh?
Yeah, myself and Mr. Mallard, you go first, Sean.
Mister Fa- Mister Fallow and I are shomping at the bit to get this record corrected. Um, thank you, uh, Mr. Dwyer for your submission and for coming in today, uh, to talk with us. Um, one of the terms of reference begrudgingly put in to this inquiry was the opportunity cost of, uh, of not proceeding with the infrastructure boom that we've done, uh, uh, based on a recycled asset toll model. Um, and I mean, I wouldn't mind you touching on what you think's the road infrastructure that we might not have been able to proceed with if we had to pay for the, um, the, uh, M5 and so forth, uh, under the traditional debt model that, uh, the chair is suggesting that we borrow money from, uh, somewhere. Um, I mean, I, I just had a quick list of the projects we've done and you might comment, but the duplication of the Pacific Highway, saving thousands of lives, or hundreds of lives, and, uh, the, um, close to my heart, the Blue Mountains, uh, project that's underway now, the, the tunnel project is well advanced in planning. I know Mr. Graham's a big fan of. And, uh, the, um, and of course the incredible, uh, Princess Highway duplication going right down to past an hour. Uh, th- those, those things aren't told and they couldn't have been done if we didn't have the capital released from the s- city-based infrastructure. Do you agree with that general proposition?
Yeah, I think the asset recycling initiative in New South Wales has been highly effective, releasing capital from a, um, an existing or legacy asset and then, um, uh, distributing that funding to a whole range of other priorities, including schools and hospitals. A- and, and I might just say not just isolated to the recycling of toll roads, also, um, poles and wires and other assets as well. A- a- as for the, the sort of exhausted list of things that, that have been built that otherwise couldn't, um, I think there's an arguable case for a huge range of different pieces of infrastructure that couldn't have been built, or that things that were built, such as schools and hospitals, would have been in a competitive decision versus building a road, which would have been a bad outcome.
A- a- and, and regional rural, particularly rural New South Wales has a, a lot more safety and efficiency issues around their roads. I mean, one of the projects, I think, I know the National Party's due their heart and our colleague Sam has had to go to another inquiry because of overlapping, uh, Sam Faraway, but, uh, was, you know, I thought they called it, but the replacement of all the wooden bridges, as romantic as they are, dangerous and inefficient, uh, uh, for the, for the road users. I mean, that's the sort of stuff that you can't do if you don't have the capital released.
Yeah, I think, eh, I, I think it's also a broader argument for road user charging where currently regional users are let down by the existing system because they drive, as I mentioned earlier, longer distances typically in heavier vehicles on roads that are of lower quality. And if we had a, a more efficient road user charging system across the broader network, not just tolling, which I appreciate is the, the subject of this inquiry, uh, there'd be an opportunity to have, um, uh, more, more granular hypothecation towards upgrading those facilities for, for regional users, such as replacing timber bridges but broader safety upgrades as well.
Yes, that's very clear that the, the finance model that the tolling has allowed the government to deliver these other, bring forward these other projects as well that wouldn't have been able to be done, you know, in either way. My, my other question is, um, and I'll quickly get to, uh, my colleague, I'm sorry to take the time up, uh, is, uh, there's, I've been a lot of, a lot made by the opposition regards to the M4 duplication, uh, and the, and the placing the toll there, or the M5 second tunnel placing the toll on the two tunnels. Um, I do the, uh, M4 and the, and the magnificent flyover, the, the, the parallel one and, and the benefit to that, and occasionally I do the M5. So, uh, w- uh, would you support that one piece of infrastructure? And I mean, it's the same when we, when, I don't know which government built the Harbour Tunnel, but the Harbour Bridge toll was retained. Um, y- you, you would just support that sort of equitable sharing of that burden on that, essentially that one corridor of, of motorway to, to create the new, the new parallel one?
Um, I, I'm, I might just interpret the question to make sure I've understood it.
Yeah, that's great.
You, you're talking about, um, the, the ultimate removal of?
No, no, no. So, so the toll was taken off, uh, the M4, uh, a- 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 as I say, paid for, although you get your cash back and all that still out there. And then the par- the parallel flyover, the giant flyover that was built, as part of the West Connects, um, project, and the toll was put on to the, on to where they, uh, the two of them. And that's been criticised, uh, by, um, Labour, the opposition. Uh, what's your view on that principle of, of sharing that across a piece, of, of a parallel, but essentially the same piece of infrastructure?
Uh, well, look, I, I fundamentally disagree with the idea of, of, that a, a road is ever paid for. So, um, my, my starting premise in this is I don't think that removal wholesale of a toll is, um, is a, a sensible policy position. Um, it has a number of, um, uh, unintended consequences that include removing a price signal which manages demand. Um, as for the, the broader principle of, um, eh, of transferring revenue from one piece of infrastructure to which there's, uh, to another piece of infrastructure and there's a, a dual benefit.
And you're like?
In principle, and I think that, that underpins exactly the proposal we've put forward, if you have an integrated network, then an integrated tolling approach makes sense for that. I don't, I think, for instance, it would be deeply unsensible to have the new harbour crossing, um, without a toll and a, a remaining toll on the existing harbour crossings because you'd get some pretty poor outcomes from a network perspective. So of course it makes sense for those to be set at a rate that is best for network, um, rather than, um, the, the, the one that, that sees a toll disappearing once a concession.
Okay, I appreciate that evidence, uh, my colleague, Mr. Fallow.
Thank you, Mr. Mallard, and I think it's actually a very good segue into terms of where I wanted to go to. So in terms of your submission, although, um, you might have other views in terms of, um, distance-based tolling or, uh, of course EV pricing that you've advocated in the past, but what you're talking about this committee is, is effectively treating the whole motorway network in New South Wales that has tolls applied to it as one network and come out with an equitable pricing system for that network, is that correct?
Uh, yes broadly, but I'm not suggesting that they should be the same price across the network. Uh, I think there is a legitimate case.
How, what that looks like, like, so you were talking, oh, in your submission, it talks about moving away from necessarily the cost recovery model, but looking at some sort of formal alternative pricing when you consider the network as a whole. So what would that look like from your perspective?
So I think there's a whole range of options and I should say that as a, as a small think tank with a small number of people, we, we've sort of put the broad idea out there. I think a huge amount of work would be required to determine what's the optimal approach to make sure that users are protected and that the legitimate commercial interests of concessionaires who's ultimately perhaps all of us through our superannuation, um, w- w- are protected. But I think the range of options includes things like, um, uh, 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 a smaller number of distance-based zones across the network that reflect that a, a journey, for instance, on the Eastern Distributor has a different value to a journey, uh, on the M7, um, on a per kilometre basis. Um, then there might be options in the future, um, to, uh, to move towards something that looks more like a regulated asset-based model, um, which we've, um, we've mentioned in the past as an option. It, it works in other infrastructure networks such as, um, for Sydney Water or our energy networks. There's no reason that it couldn't work in, um, i- i- in a, in a road environment as well. I think it needs to be an investigation of all of these different options, but we need to have all of the different levers available around things like initial toll, um, escalation rates, uh, capital contributions, uh, and, um, and concession lengths as well.
So I think in your submission, you mentioned, uh, sort of factors as being time, distance, location and mass-based charging as all things that could be considered, um, as part of that. And I think as you've just referenced, then there's the potential for that to be graduated, so to speak, so that there isn't just, you know, a per kilometre, um, but maybe in a, in a chunk of kilometres, so a zonal, uh, approach perhaps. So for an inner zone, there might be a premium to what there would be to an outer zone. Is that sort of what you're seeing in terms of could, what could be achieved?
Yeah, I think that's one plausible option. The only, um, any slight alteration I'd say is that, um, clearly a, a, a trip across, uh, uh, an empty three-lane tollway at two AM in the morning is quite different to the value of the journey when it's done at, at seven thirty in the morning.
Yeah, and, and now considering that, um, in terms of the concession end dates that we, we're faced with across that network, and I think this goes back to part of your conversation with Mr. Mallard in terms of, of roads never paid for necessarily, uh, we do have the challenge that there is, uh, a concession end date, um, for the M5 southwest of twenty twenty six, um, the Eastern Distributor, um, at one end of July twenty forty eight and a whole range of others that are sort of set at July twenty forty eight, um, and then West Connects at twenty sixty. Um, do you have any views on how that could, um, be equalised, so to speak?
Yeah, I think that's, uh, as I mentioned in the sort of four levers you can, you can pull earlier on, I think that's quite a powerful one that, that could be used by governments to have a fairer, um, more equitable and more consistent charging regime across the network by looking to homogenise some of those concession models. In, in the regulated asset-based approach that I mentioned, um, typically under a regulated asset base, you have something that's more like a perpetual ownership model or a longer-term model with, um, with pricing regulated on, um, horizons or intervals, typically five years in, in the, um, the UK model, which has largely been adopted in Australia. That, of course, would have a different, um, sort of concession model underpinning it if, if that was the choice to go down that route. But as I mentioned earlier on, change any one of those levers, then you have to, you have to change the others in order to recover the money required to deliver the road or to repay for a road that's already been delivered.
Now, you've made criticism as well, um, both in this inquiry and in your submission as well, uh, with respect to the M5 cashback and the toll relief programme. Do you just want to outline your specific concerns with respect to both of those initiatives and why you think that they don't actually provide a, a broader benefit to taxpayers?
Yeah, so I, I, I might just take the M5 cashback as a, as a first example. So i- if I travel over the M5 at, at a quarterly interval, I'm able to claim back the cost of that toll for, for, for my use of that. So I'm sure that's very good for transurban's shareholders, um, but it's not very good for the taxpayer in Dubbo that is making a contribution towards my use of that toll that I'm perfectly capable of paying for myself and have been the principal beneficiary of travelling over that route. That distorts decision. Um, people will, um, take the toll because they know they can claim it back, which means it's an inefficient use of infrastructure. Um, so it distorts incentives for use of the system and it's just unfair. And I think, um, toll relief similarly, um, flows to a very small number of users of the network and, um, the, the very legitimate system having concerns that exist beyond that small number of users could be addressed through having a broader reform to an integrated approach to, to tolling across the system. If we're making a decision that there are some people that are heavily impacted, then let's make sure we're targeting it properly at those that need that help, not a, a fairly blunt instrument, um, in toll relief and an entirely blunt instrument in M5 cashback.
Thanks, Mr. Dwyer, I think my time has expired.
Thank you, it has indeed. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Dwyer, for your submission and for attending today. Um, it's been very useful and informative for us. Um, to the extent there are any supplementary questions, the committee secretary will be in touch, um, and you'll have twenty one days to answer. But that concludes, uh, this session. Um, okay, let's get started. Um, before, uh, we move on to, um, discussion, could I ask you first, uh, councillor Calvert, um, to state your name, uh, position, title, and then either swear an oath or an affirmation?
Yes, councillor Barry Calvert, president of Western Sydney Regional Organisation of Councils. And my affa- affirmation is, I solemnly, sincerely and truly declare and affirm that the evidence now about to be given by me shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
Fantastic, thank you. Uh, Mr. Casselli.
So I have to apologise first. I, I, I was, I was gonna give an oath and I don't have it before me, so, um, I was just wondering if one could be provided on a screen?
Just one minute, um, I will grab it for you, hang on, um. Apologies. Okay. Bear with me one second. Okay, um, so if you could state your name and title and then I will, um, help you through the oath or affirmation, which one did you want to take, the oath?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
So my name's Charles Cassellie, I'm the chief executive officer of the Western Sydney Regional Organisation of Councils.
Thank you, Mr. Casselli. Um, so if you could repeat after me, I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me.
I swear that the evidence now about to be given by me.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth.
Shall be the truth, the whole truth.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
And nothing but the truth, so help me God.
Fantastic, thank you very much. Um, would either of you like to begin with a short opening statement?
Yes, I'd like to, uh, Chair, um, and I'll make this very brief because I'm sure there's going to be a pile of questions, uh, uh, about to be unleashed. Um, thanks Committee for allowing us to appear before you to express some of our c- concerns over the tolling regime across our Greater Sydney today. Western Sydney is more greatly impacted by tolling issues than other parts of our city, simply because it lacks an equivalent public transport infrastructure in terms of coverage and capacity that results in greater dependence on private vehicles, it's well-known. And because on average, Western Sydney residents travel further to access jobs, services and recreational opportunities. I think the committee by now will know all the issues, I had a look at some of the submissions, but I'll just quickly run over the ones that are, of a major concern to Western Sydney. Uh, different parts of the city pay different rates for similar journeys, that makes no sense to us. In Western Sydney, fewer public options means that effectively Western Sydney is chained to the roads, much like the Romans two thousand years ago. Western Sydney commuters are either forced to pay expensive tolls or spend extra hours navigating gridlocked secondary routes, which has a significant impact on the quality of life. We should acknowledge that transport is by far the second largest cost for Western Sydney households. Above CPI increases in toll charges are, in our view, unjustifiable, especially when wage growth is stagnant. Many Western Sydney commuters actually meet the weekly regio relief threshold, these are people to spend twenty eight dollars every day on tolls. But we also acknowledge that others with far less of a cost to import on tolls, those that pay as little as six dollars per day also receive the same regio relief. Their relief is welcome, but it's not targeted to those most in need. And we should remember that in addition to the commute task, Western Sydney residents are often required to use toll roads to access medical care, education and other services. For example, I've heard the stories of, um, uh, parents that have to use, uh, Westmead, the Westmead Medical Precinct, uh, from Richmond, for example, and they are also hit by tolls just in accessing medical services. Wesrock would like to see a fairer, more equitable tolling system that includes, but not limited to, we see journey caps for commuters and daily caps for small business transport freight operators such as Peuris, for example. We would like a fairer, more logical system. Why do residents in the north pay, in the northwest, especially in the growth areas, pay four times more than those in the southwest for similar journeys? Toll roads are a major burden of individual households and many people have no choice but to use them. Wouldn't it be nice if residents had more transparency regarding how those tolls are set? We would like to see, given that technology recently has provided unique opportunities that have never existed before, we now have technology that enables us to apply different charges for different road users depending on where journeys start and finish. We're able to incentivise out-of-peak travel through time of day charging. We can discount travel for those that have no options but to use tollways. And we can accommodate a range of other economic or social factors in ways that we're not previously, we were not previously able to do it. And the, and the last point I want to make is that I think there is a lack of acknowledgement that, um, the benefits and costs between road users and local communities hasn't been adequately addressed. For example, toll roads do not just provide a benefit to road users, they also provide benefits such as improved amenity and safety of local communities, improvement in the quality of the local environment, improvement in property values of those communities that are actually around the new tollways. But the issue is that largely tollways are funded through user pays, even though the benefits go to those that may not necessarily be, uh, users of the system, especially for those communities that have privileged access to public transport infrastructure. I think equally important, and this will be my last point, will be that if road users, i.e. the, um, the workers of Western Sydney that are largely paying for West Connects are the ones that are providing the major funding, then surely it's, it, it, it is reasonable to expect that any revenue or any funds or proceeds from the sale of the, of the tolling concessions flow back to those that are actually are paying for the infrastructure. Now, I know that recently the government announced West Invest and I think that was a, a West Invest, and I think that was a very welcome initiative. But I think the point that we would like to make, and I think the president has spoken on this previously, was that a one-off announcement about a West Invest fund that recognises that the people of Western Sydney are paying largely for this tolling infrastructure, it shouldn't be a one-off announcement. It should be be actually part of the government policy agenda, that this happens automatically, systematically, whenever these sorts of facilities are actually built. I think the West Invest fund is a step in the right direction, and we commend the government for doing it. But it's it's a first step, and it's far, it it falls way short of what is actually possible. I think, final point I'll make is, I think that any substantial reform of the tolling arrangements in Sydney, as we're suggesting, will inevitably lead to an exercise in toll charging harmonisation across all the toll roads. I think that's inevitable for it to try and achieve the things that we need to do. We believe that this is possible, and this we would we would wholeheartedly support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr Calvert, did you want to speak as well, or is that statement for both of you?
Well, if I could, I'd like to just
Please do.
emphasise a few of those points and maybe give some concrete examples of what Charles was saying. The first thing is about the effect on the community that tollways can have. Now, back in the old days, if we from the northwest wanted to drive to Sydney, we would go through Epping Station. If you remember those days, Epping was just gridlocked. And also, if you wanted to go north, you'd go through Pennant Hills. But those areas are no longer gridlocked, and the people of those communities have really benefited benefited from the tollways. And they haven't actually paid for that. It's been paid for by us in northwest using the tollways. And I think, as Charles was saying, we need to look at the cost benefit analysis of the tollways overall, not just in terms of who's driving on. The other thing about that cost benefit analysis is some of the larger trucking companies that bring trucks up from Melbourne to Brisbane are now saving a lot of time and a lot of money in petrol by going through the tollways. And yes, the the tollway means an extra cost to them, but I I would assume that overall, they would actually be gaining from those tollways. And I'd I'd like to see some kind of analysis of that taken in as well. And and Charles talked about people of Western Sydney having to use cars. Now, all the analysis that I've seen, including even our report, suggested that there's only one car in the household going along through the toll. But most cars, most households in, especially in the outer western Sydney, have at least two cars. And some of the, in some cases, that second car also has to go through tollways, often to the medical services or even shopping or taking kids to school. But also, often the two people living in that address go to different workplaces and go to use different tolls. And so in many cases, the figures we've put in there have to be doubled. It's it's twice as bad as it sounds in the in those tables. And that hasn't been addressed, and I think it needs to be taken into account that those people are being disadvantaged because there's no public transport to use. So I think those things need to be added in to the mix to be considered. And the other thing that I think Charles probably mentioned is that Wesrock is a large organisation. We represent at the moment six or seven councils across Western Sydney, and that takes in over a million people. And when we have Wesrock board meetings, all the board members are all up talking about the tolls. It's not not something that is sort of in the background in terms of Western Sydney. It is a major talking point which Western Sydney would like to see addressed.
Thank you very much. We will start with questions from the opposition. Mr Graham.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you very much for the Wesrock submission. I think you've just put clearly up in lights what this means to Western Sydney, and I I thank you for the submission you put in front of the inquiry. I might ask a question first to Mr Cassacelli. I'll just quote one additional line or two, two additional sentences from the submission that I thought really summed up that case you've just both made, and that was this, in summary, those with lower incomes are forced to compromise with the lowest cost homes located furthest from the CBD and public transport networks. Therefore, these groups are subjected to the highest travel costs via motorways to gain high value employment closest to the Sydney CBD. It's really that combination of factors that you're drawing attention to. Do you feel, when I read that, this, these tolls really seem like a tax on suburban living? Is that how you feel about the impact this is having on people who choose to live in these bits of Sydney?
It's interesting when people use that 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 phrase, people choose to live. I don't think they actually have a choice. I think, and I and I used to live at Glenmore Park, and I used to travel to Sydney, to the CBD. When I was living at Glenmore Park, the reason I was living at Glenmore Park, it was the only place that a newly married couple could afford. It was as simple as that. It wasn't a choice for us. It was simple, an economic equation that 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 came into play. So I don't think that the people that are out there are actually there by choice, notwithstanding that there are parts of Western Sydney that are desirable to live there. But I think, given their choice in terms of, can I live closer to a high value job if I was able to buy the the property for the same amount of money, it it's it's a no brainer. So the issue for for a lot of people in Western Sydney right now is, they're there at the moment, and to be quite honest, I'm not too sure whether, when that original decision is made to buy a property, say, around that Glenmore Park like I did, I certainly wasn't aware of the impact that travel would have on me, living out there, in terms of my quality of life and the and the, just the expenses of the household. That that sort of became evident after I was out there, far too late to make an informed judgement about where I was living. So I I I agree that there are some people out there, out there that have that choose to be out there. There are many people that are out there because it is the only place that they can afford to live.
But choose or not, they're paying these, these tolls. I might ask you this. Look, you've been outspoken on this issue, including on this question. How much are Western Sydney commuters actually paying, for example, on the West Connects? I've, that's something I've asked the treasurer, the transport minister, the finance minister. No one will be clear about exactly how much Western Sydney commuters are are paying. Isn't that something, knowing that information is in the public interest, isn't it?
A hundred percent, absolutely. And I and I think the 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 problem's actually largely in what you're stating, and that's just part of the problem. I think there is a lack of recognition of the actual cost of providing public transport and the actual cost of providing roads for those people that can't access public transport. But there hasn't been a dialogue by any government that tries to inform communities about, you know, when they catch a train in the morning, what does it actually mean to the government? How much of that train travel is actually subsidised? In terms of the road access charges, whether they be registration costs, taxes, fuel excise, and the like, do we, do they, do the road users actually have an appreciation of the subsidy that's even provided to the private motorists when they jump on on the road? And the answer to that is, no, there isn't. There is, there is very little information out there to inform people about actual costs of the provision of transport infrastructure and transport services. And this is why we battle every time there is a major transport project. The government of the day has got to go out there and fight a battle trying to justify why they're spending money on a particular project.
Well, let me come to one of those, let me come to one of those debates about cost, because I think it is a really important point. In your submission, you set out the yearly cost of toll, depending on where you live, which corridor you live in, the M two, the M five. Some of those, for example, in the M two, you estimate the yearly cost is nine thousand three hundred and thirty five dollars. And councillor Calvert's made the point about having multiple vehicles. It could be even higher. In response, the government or other other groups have said, look, most people, most Sydney side of the paying far less than that, might be ten dollars a week in toll. How do you respond to that view, which is put put back when when you put these strong figures in your submission?
So that those figures that you've just read from, the table that we provided was having a staff member sit down and actually work out the costs of real live people going to real jobs in the east. So and we can see that from the northwest growth area around Richmond, for example, people could be paying as much as ten thousand dollars, just under ten thousand dollars a year. Other parts of Sydney goes down to six and three and and four thousand, depending which part of Western Sydney you come from. So already, there is a lack of logic behind why we have this wide disparity in toll charges or toll costs for households. The the figures that we quoted are real, and they're understated. The councillor Calvert is one hundred percent correct, because we don't allow, and this was brought up by one of my staff members who regularly travels from Richmond to Westmead to get medical attention for some of his, for children. She was saying that she could add another twenty to thirty dollars a week on top of that, simply to access medical services in her family. So those costs are real, and they are, they're the sorts of costs that are impacting households in Western Sydney.
Can I just add something here? Yes, councillor Calvert.
Yeah, I mean, I live in Sydney's northwest, and that figure that we've quoted, thirty seven dollars ninety is the daily cost. That is because if you go down from here, you get you get on to the M seven, you pay a toll there, you turn left and go on to the M two and pay another toll, then you go down through the Lane Curve Tunnel and pay a third toll, and then you go across the bridge or the Harbour Tunnel and pay a fourth toll. So from the northwest, you're paying four tolls to get into Sydney.
And you make the point about multiple cars. I mean, a lot of the figures that we see on tolling from the government include the cost for an individual vehicle. How many of these driveways in northwest Sydney or southwest Sydney have one car in the driveway?
I don't know whether we've done a analysis of that, but I just, just from living here, I can tell you that you go down to the new growth areas of Marsden Park, and we've done a few planning tours of there, that place. It is, it is coming up because the new planning system doesn't allow much parking. And people are now complaining, we've got two cars and nowhere to park them because the streets are too narrow, and we're getting
I'm out of time, so I might just ask Mr Cassacelli to respond to that point, and then hand to my colleague. How realistic is it that when you talk about one car in the driveway, that might be true, as you point out, for a commuter in five dock, how true is it of these driveways in Western Sydney?
I I can only give you my personal observations. When I lived in Penrith, in the Glenmore Park estate, people out there had two or three cars. And year in a day, there weren't no cars about. So they're obviously being used. I now live at five dock. The funny thing is, the same thing happens. People around here have got two or three cars, but they're all parked in their driveways year in a day, because they've got lots and lots of public transport options. That's the difference.
Thank you.
My colleague has asked you questions about affordability concerns, but I want to talk to you about neighbourhood amenity amongst other concerns. To either of the two witnesses, one of the reports we've been receiving at this inquiry has been about rat running and residents turning to local roads to avoid tolls. As a representative of Western Sydney councils, is this a phenomenon which you guys have some experience in?
So my experience in answering your question comes from the fact that I used to be head of roads before the West Conex was actually built, so the question of rat running was always one of those things that we had to deal with. So let me make, let me be clear about this. So Western Sydney road users, especially those that have travelled into the CBD, have two options. They can either pay the tolls, or they can't pay the tolls. If they can't pay the tolls, they don't have a public transport option. What they have to do is use secondary routes, and those secondary routes, as as people call them, the the rat runs around neighbourhoods. Here is the issue, though. When you build a new tollway, for whatever reason, I won't go into the politics or the economics of it, what happens is they reconfigure the parallel routes. And you could have a look at this on Parramatta Road. So look at West Conex, the tunnel between Strathfield and Ashfield, for example, and go and have a look at Parramatta Road. And what what normally happens, for whatever reason, is the capacity of those roads is actually reduced. They reconfigure the roads for various reasons. It may be that there was a promise of increased amenity to local communities. It may have, there may be other factors that come into play. But the rat runs are real. They're made worse by government policy that actually reduces capacity on those parallel routes after the new infrastructure is built.
And what pressure is that putting on council-run roads?
It it means that council roads have higher maintenance to say shows them, because there are two things. The increased use of those roads means that the maintenance charges go up. The the councils have to deal with reduced amenity by those neighbourhoods. They might have to go and put in traffic calming devices and other engineering measures to try and maintain the amenity and safety of those roads. So there's now an additional impost on local government because of those policies.
If you have any examples of that, can you tell us about them now? Or otherwise, can you take that on notice and provide us some examples of the local roads and councils which have had to make these adjustments, as you describe, Mr Cassacelli?
Sure, I'd be delighted. I'll take that on notice.
Equally, you did mention Parramatta Road. And one of the promises of the West Connects was that it would lead to the revitalisation of Parramatta Road. In fact, I think at some point someone said we would turn it into a boulevard à la those that are in Paris. Is Parramatta Road a Parisian boulevard in your opinion?
Not yet. But if I remember correctly, when the government made that announcement, there was a, and I was a member for Strathfield when when that was occurring, I had a lot of people banging on my door saying, we would like to see this down to Parramatta Road. We'd like to see, you know, wider pedestrian footpaths. We'd like to see additional local parking and access to local businesses. We would like dedicated tramways down the centre. By the time we worked it all out, everyone really wanted a twelve-lane wide road to accommodate all of these things. Here is the reality. Parramatta Road was a major through road, not only serving the people of Western Sydney to get to the CBD to their jobs, but also provided connectivity within the inner west. And if you try and reduce the capacity of Parramatta Road by putting Parisian boulevards that significantly reduces capacity, you're going to introduce movement and connect connectivity problems within the inner west. It's as simple as that. I think there's a balance to be achieved, and there's a lot of people that are working on this. No, it is not a Parisian boulevard now. Could it be? I don't know. I think it's, at the moment, Parramatta Road is serving an alternate route to those that simply cannot use the tolls, the tollways.
Well, this might be an unpopular opinion, but I quite like Parramatta Road. I think it's a lovely place, as it is. It incubates a lot of small businesses. It allows a lot of people to start up in their enterprises in in spaces, and creates a lot of tremendous amenity.
I somewhat lived next to Parramatta, and I would dispute your views, but anyway.
But I love Parramatta Road.
But my only point in this is, to the extent to which these road projects are sold as opportunities to revitalise other roads, that's just a clear case of false and misleading conduct, isn't it? Because everyone knew at the time that Parramatta Road was a major IT road, and that the consequence of building the West Connects would have minimal to low impact on it. Or am I being a bit too, a bit unfair to the people at the time?
I think you're being grossly unfair to the people at the time. If you ask people on the north side of Parramatta Road, would you like to get across Parramatta Road to the south side where the businesses are, they'll tell you what it was like.
Yeah, I used to travel on it nearly every day. Love the road.
You used to travel on it, but you didn't cross it from the north to the south. There's a, there's a big difference between travelling on a road and having to cross it. But can I make this, can I make this? Since West Conex has been built, there's been nothing but praise from local businesses and and communities around it about how much easier it is to get around. So I I go from, I go to those people in terms of evaluating whether something's successful or not. So I think you're being just a tad unfair.
Well, we might disagree on that point. But but my, the broader point is, is well, what do councils need to deal with the rat running? That's my last question, I think.
I I I think the way to do that is for state government agencies, I think it's transport for New South Wales since maritime and road service has been, has come to a demise. I think what needs to happen is for local government and the state government to get together and have a general collaboration on what you need to do, but not only Parramatta Road. There's a number of other secondary routes that parallel along Parramatta Road, and also some cross, some crossings across Parramatta Road. And the key here is to get the state and local government together in a room to sort out the competing interests. You can't have transport for New South Wales, work it out, and then come out to local government, say, this is what we thought about, this is how it's going to be. Local government has some intimate knowledge that the state government just doesn't have. And I think a collaboration will actually see a reasonable outcome in terms of making Parramatta Road, maybe not a Parisian boulevard, but maybe a Roman-type road.
Well, the Parramatta Road haters want the conch, so I have to stop there.
Thank you, Mr Mooki.
That's not true.
I wanted to
We're not haters. I I support Parramatta Road.
Thank you. Mr Cassacelli, during your opening statement, you mentioned, I think you used the word privilege in relation to those who have sort of other alternatives other than than toll roads. other than than toll roads. And I think that that for me raised a really important consideration and I think touches on this or highlights the statements in your submission around this compounding of disadvantage that is faced by those people who live further away but still need to work in the city or you know, go to the city in different times. I personally live on the central coast in a place that does not have very good transport. And my journey can take up to three hours, sometimes much more, to get from where I live to the city, unless I use a toll road. I just wanted to ask you, in terms of the, I guess, the impact on the people of Western Sydney, how many people are travelling more than an hour for their commute on a good day?
Now, I can't answer that because I just don't have those figures available to me. But can I, can I say the observation you made? I use the word privilege on purpose. If you look at, and I live, I live at five dock now, the centre of the public transport universe, which has been funded not only by the communities around five dock, but largely through taxes over decades have been paid by the people of Western Sydney as well. You know, there's been an inequitable spend in terms of providing public transport infrastructure in the west. So when I said privilege, it's exactly that, to have privileged access to infrastructure that only they can use. The issue for us now in Western Sydney is is simply, there is, in the next, what is it, to twenty thirty six, we've worked out there will be an extra one hundred thousand resident workers in Western Sydney that will not have access to a local job. So in addition to the almost three hundred thousand people that are travelling east to work, there will be another hundred thousand people. Now, given that that challenge is recognised by all three levels of government, you would think that more investment will be made in in Western Sydney in terms of public transport infrastructure. But for all the good things that have been, that are happening right now, and you'd be a fool to not recognise the significant investment being made across public transport in Greater Sydney in the last two decades, in the last, yeah, it's just been tremendous. But for us, there's some amusing observations. There's going to be another million people in Western Sydney between now and almost twenty forty, and we need to accommodate them. If we don't want them travelling east to jobs in in our private vehicles, we have to improve public transport infrastructure. The latest announcement by the state government was that they were going to build a rail link between St Mary's and the airport. It's going to have four railway stations, four railway stations. Wesrock's been arguing for a while that that same link, if you put a railway station at the same distance as there are on the Western Railline, for example, between the Hawkesbury and Campbelltown, you could create a corridor of livability that would accommodate seven hundred thousand people within walking distance of a railway station. Simple. Yet there's been no announcement, there hasn't been a study about creating a livability corridor that would actually address the hundred thousand extra resident workers that will be going east to their jobs. So what we're saying is that those hundred thousand people that are resident workers and are going to pop up in Western Sydney over the next sixteen to twenty years are going to have commutes of greater than an hour, to answer your question about it. So whatever the figure is right now, add another hundred thousand on top, and that's what we're going to be doing, given what investment we're having in public transport out west today.
It's a bit of an obvious question, but I guess if you were travelling over an hour each way for your commute, that's an extra two hours to your working day, saving some time by using a toll road is obviously going to be more important than if you were living, say, half an hour away, correct? So in terms of that, I guess disadvantage, is it, is it the fault of the people of Western Sydney that there aren't enough local jobs and they have to commute?
I doubt very much if that's the case because the state government is, is actually put up its hand in saying that one of the major challenges for any government, state government going into the future will be the creation of local jobs in Western Sydney to keep pace with the increase in population growth.
So it's not, so it's not their fault that there's not, that there's insufficient jobs and they have to commute. Is it their fault that there is insufficient public transport options?
Well, definitely not. And can I add that the Charles has been talking about what you might call the high-value jobs in in the middle of Sydney, but many of the people in Western Sydney work in construction and they're not employed necessarily in Western Sydney. They have to go to North Sydney or further down through South Sydney. And that came out in the, in the Covid situation with construction workers had to travel across different LTA's. And it's, it's many thousands and they are all driving.
So I guess, you know, the the question then is, is it fair that the people of Western Sydney are having to use toll roads at huge expense?
No, it is absolutely not fair. And what is it, and what's even less fair is that we actually have the means to address that problem. So, you know, if, like, why would, if I live at five dock and I jump on a toll road, why would I be charged exactly the same amount for using that toll road as someone who has no access to public transport whatsoever? There is something inherently wrong with that proposition.
And as you say, there is, there's now very advanced technology. And you would think that we would, with with some, some time required to develop the the appropriate applications and all the rest of it, you'd think we would be able to identify which people have no choice but to use the toll roads.
All the cars, all the cars are registered and their number plate comes up at the toll booth and we know where the, where the car is garage that, so we know where it's coming from.
So our previous witness was trying to argue that it was unfair to have toll relief schemes and for the M five cash back. What is your view on that?
I, I think toll relief schemes are a blunt way of dealing with a fundamental issue that is yet to be addressed properly through, for example, the capability of some emerging technologies. So of course you're going to have toll relief for for those in Sydney that are affected by a number of things, the socio-economic demographics of the area. There's historical disadvantage, you know. If if an area of Sydney has failed to be, to attract a sort of investment in public transport infrastructure, well, it's not the fault of the local communities that have been paying their taxes for decades. It's the fault of the governments that have failed to provide for for those communities. And if providing relief is the only mechanism that's available to you, and by the way, it's not, well, then I think it's fair. I think, I think it's, it's grossly mature to suggest otherwise.
Thank you. My time has expired. I'm sure the government has lots of questions. Mr Mallard?
I'm happy to jump in actually, if that's. No, that's all right. Look, I think I need to get on the record and and.
It frustrates me.
My position on, on Parramatta Road. As somebody who lived within twenty metres of Parramatta Road for twenty-one years of my life and represented a community that spanned across Parramatta Road, I know how much Parramatta Road needs revitalisation and how many issues there are. And Mr Casaselli, I know, of course, respect your current role, but as your former role as the Minister for Strathfield, probably have an appreciation of the difficulties of Parramatta Road as well, which I think you certainly can present to the community in the north-south divide of Parramatta Road and how difficult that is. But I think it's difficult in terms of this inquiry not to look at things in their context. So we'll of course talk about the pricing of tolls, but Mr Casaselli, as you and I would both appreciate, there comes a benefit when it comes to those toll roads and, and let's choose Strathfield, for instance, and and West Connects. And the difference in time-saving that you would have had from commuting to the city with West Connects and without. So would you say that there's a benefit in terms of that toll road infrastructure in terms of travel and commuting times as well?
Oh, absolutely. Hundred percent, Mr Fallow, there, there is substantial benefit. But the benefit can only be enjoyed by those that have the capacity to pay for the tolls. Those that don't have capacity don't get the benefit. But they're actually hit with a double whammy. They don't get the benefit, but they're now forced to use secondary routes where capacity's been reduced and then their time on the road has actually increased.
Mr Casaselli as well, in terms of the, and you'd know it well, and I imagine probably would have travelled on it many times, when for that brief period where the M four wasn't told, the benefit of travelling on the M four west from Strathfield was practically non-existent because it was literally a car park and there was very little time-saving to be achieved at all. And I'm sure you and I both took that commute many times back and forth when there wasn't a toll on there. But there is actually a time benefit that you, that you achieve by having a toll on those roads as well.
Yeah, there is doubt that there is a time benefit for those that can actually get access to it. But if you, and I'm sure you've done this, Mr Fallow, if you come out to the west pre-Covid days, and I think it's still there now. When you're heading west at Strathfield, where the turnoff onto the M four actually occurs, you will see that there is a traffic queue in the left-hand lane, the curbside lane, that goes back one and a half to two kilometres. And they're the people that can't afford to get onto the M four, which doesn't have a car on it. They're using Parramatta Road because they can't afford the tolls on that. So the answer to your question is, yes, there is a benefit, but the question is, if the benefit applied equally across all people, those that are socially and economically disadvantaged, as well as they can afford it, and the answer is no.
And Mr Casaselli, interested in terms of the, the, the cost assessment you are undertaking with five dock and Glenmore Park as well in terms of comparison, I, I take the point that there is, of course, that there is, of course, a disparity in those communities. But there is also a pricing mechanism when it comes to property values. Like I was just looking up as we were talking, the, the median price in five dock is two million dollars. And there is certainly a, a premium that is attached to that public transport option, isn't there?
A hundred, a hundred percent. I totally agree with you. I, I think the, the joy of living at five dock is I've got unfettered access to a hundred transport options every morning that I want to get up and go to, to work, which is an enjoyment.
And even, and not just to pick up five dock, but of course there are many areas throughout Western Sydney that have, and and under this government, many more in fact, that have great public transport options because of the North West rail link or whether it be being close to the Western Railline or the South West Railline. And it is a certain premium for being closer to public transport options than there is from being further removed from them. Whether it be Western Sydney, North West Sydney or Central Sydney, the public transport does actually have a price premium when it comes to property values as well.
Yeah, agreed.
And, and Mr Casaselli, interested in terms of, and we spent a bit of time discussing this with infrastructure partnerships as well. But what you would say is a good model, and I take the submission that it is something that we need to look at, or your view that it is something we need to look at in terms of the whole network. What would be a good pricing mechanism from your perspective to take consideration of not just distance, but also perhaps the challenges for communities in Western Sydney, as you've outlined, in terms of ability to pay for toll roads and the like?
Look, I, I think a good model would be one that, A, first, you can't look at individual tollways in terms of trying to sort out, you know, what's fair and equitable for the user of the tollway. I think what we need to do is have a look at what is a fair pricing mechanism across the entire toll road network in Sydney and making sure that the tolls reflect the value proposition for those that use it, but also reflect the, the economic, social, environmental benefits that those toll roads have delivered to local communities. And making sure that the pricing mechanism shares not only the, the benefits, but also the burdens of, of the toll network. I think there has to be a recognition that over decades, there has been a lack of investment in Western Sydney. I mean, that's, you know, that's well recognised by all sides of politics and all three levels of government. That has to be addressed in some way. And a, a good tolling arrangement in Sydney would actually accommodate the fact that different communities in different parts of Sydney have, have significantly different access to public transport and viable alternative toll roads, you know, other roads that are non-toll, for example. And that should be built into the pricing mechanism. Now, once you've done all that, I think the other thing that needs to be done is, well, there are those members of our communities and and businesses that are high users of the, of the toll network, the toll road network. So if you, if you live in the North West growth area and you go across four tollways to get to work and you're absorbing forty dollars a day, there's, there's a lot of workers that can't absorb forty dollars a day. I think there should be a cap on those, on those individuals so that, you know, sure, I live at North, North West, I go to Sydney, I get hit with twenty dollars a day. I'm from Penrith, I need to go into Sydney, I only use one tollway, but my contribution's twenty dollars, which is for a similar journey, similar benefit in terms of travel time saving, saving, and the same thing is replicated in the South West. So there's got to be some sanity and a value proposition that says, you know, a kilometre of road in the, in the North West growth area, the Central West and the South West growth areas, for example, is worth the same to you regardless of who you are. And and that's how it should be priced.
I'll hand over to my colleague, Mr Mallard. Thanks, Mr Casaselli.
Much time, but thank you and good to see you, Charles. The, the, well, I have to weigh into the Parramatta Road debate. I mean, I've been involved in that for years as a councillor and so forth. There's been about twenty plans for Parramatta Road, but I do travel it when regrettable I have to drive in to a city for, for parliament work and so on because of the hours. I go down the West Connects, jump onto that last bit of Parramatta Road and observing the side roads being closed in terms of plazas, which is part of Robert Stokes' plan, it's state government money, so it is slowly being, you know, improved. But I, I'm with Mr Mooki. I mean, I, I love looking at all the wonderful wedding shops and all the variety of retail there, which won't, which finds a hard place to, to, to accommodate Sydney. That's my editorial. Look, I just want to say.
Down the Strathfield Road's empty shops.
I grew up, most of them aren't empty, but I grew up in, born, raised Penrith and, and I know Glenmore Park really well, good liberal area. And I, you know, when I, I was a kid, the Griner government extended the, the M four from, where it went off at Dooneside, I think it went off to Blacktown, through to Parramatta and then bit by bit it got extended. And I mean, that was the only infrastructure we had in Western Sydney in terms of roads. It was the Great Western Highway and I used to commute, drive on the highway all the way down Parramatta Road. But now, now we've got the M seven, I acknowledge Labour, Labour, that was a Labour commitment, M seven, M five, M four and the M two, which councillor Calvert was talking about for, I mean, granted they're told that there's a lot more road infrastructure. I live in the Blue Mountains now. I drive down from Kootumbe, I get to Glenbrook. So last set of lights, if I go M four, M seven, M two and into the city until, I'm a quarry street. I mean, there has been a boom of road infrastructure. You've got to acknowledge that and all the benefits that come from it.
Yeah, so, sorry.
Mr Mallard.
It's awkward. So, no, I, I, I agree with you. There has been a boom. There's no doubt about that. But let me, let me throw to you the challenges before all of us and not just this committee. By twenty fifty six, no, let's go back. If you go and stand on the tallest building at Parramatta and look east and have a, and just imagine all of the transport infrastructure that's there today, by twenty fifty six on that same building, turn around and look west. And you need to have the same transport infrastructure.
I'm running out of time, Mr Casaselli. I'll do David Strewbeach. Let me ask you this then. I, I know what you're saying. And I challenge you on the issue of, I mean, we need, this problem with these inquiries, it's like a horse of blinkers, not, not looking at the big picture. So we're talking about tolls on roads and, and that's your terms of reference to our inquiry. But I mean, I'm parliamentary secretary for the Eretropolis, right? Billions of dollars of investment in infrastructure, road and, and rail and busways underway and estimate two hundred thousand real meaningful jobs for Western Sydney. I mean, the government is committed to finding local jobs and local opportunities. It's not just about motorways and tollways because they're not told, M nine, which is a saying, won't be told, Northern Road's not told. The six hundred million dollars we spent on the M four smart motorway system through the Parramatta, that's not told. So there is, there is a bigger holistic picture you've got to consider. Would you, would you agree with that? The government does understand that.
One hundred percent is a bigger picture, but let me ask you this question.
Oh, you keep asking me questions. I want you to talk about that.
Significant investment, Mr Mallard, in transport infrastructure in Western Sydney. Regardless of that investment, the number one issue for the mayors of all Western Sydney councils is intra-regional connectivity. There is very little public transport to enhance livability and connectivity within the region.
I heard what you said about the airport metro and in another inquiry, it's trying to derail that. But the, the airport metro, you said four stations, and I've, I've been involved with this project quite a bit. I mean, it's the issue of three-minute trains and how quick they can move through the stations, have, brothers train to be three minutes. The more stations, the slower the network. That's the issue. And that's an employment and living corridor, which is largely not developed yet between the airport and St Mary's. So that's, that's part, that's about orbital connectivity along with, along with the Northern Road. You acknowledge that?
No, I don't.
The transport and a road connectivity.
I don't. You asked me a question. I tell you what I do acknowledge, that the North West, the, the rail link between St Mary's and the airport is largely to get people to the airport and off the airport and serves Greater Sydney. That, those four stations on that rail, if you can't get on a train, it doesn't. That, those four stations on that rail line, if you can't get on a train, it doesn't serve, it doesn't serve the intra-regional needs of residents of Western Sydney. That, that rail line and four stations is not going to create a livability corridor. It's going to have four stations and, and you're absolutely right. You know, we're going to have trains going in there connecting St Mary's, the Western Rail Line to the airport. And I think it's a bloody good thing, absolutely. But are you suggesting for a moment that we're not smart enough to build the interests of people trying to get to and from the airport and, and look after the interests of local communities in terms of access to railway stations so they get on trains, so they get to their jobs in the east? Of course we can do both, but at the moment.
We're trying not to encourage jobs in the east. We want local employment in Western Sydney, quality jobs. I'm disappointed you have fled back to the inner city, frankly. I mean, I went the other direction. It's quality jobs keep young people in Western Sydney, raise their families. I mean, we just announced a state national park, great national park in Western Sydney. We really are committed to the holistic approach, not just about toll roads.
Can I just add that the, it is possible to put an extra rail track in and have one track which is an express track and the other one is a slow track?
Yes.
But can I say the same, Mr Mallard? Your own government acknowledges that the jobs of the future ain't all going to be in Western Sydney because they're committed to a metro line between the CBD and Parramatta where there's going to be an economic and jobs creation corridor between Parramatta and CBD. So, you know, I, I would love, I would love for the government's projections to come true, but Professor O'Neill from Western Sydney University has done a very detailed jobs and transport analysis. And he's actually looked at the current run rate of creating jobs out there. It's going to fall well short of government expectations. My, my suggestion to government would be, have a close look at that and see where the future investment in transport needs to happen, not necessarily along where we think it may happen based on aspirations as opposed to the evidence that's been before us.
All right. Thank you for the witness, Madam Chair.
Perhaps a future inquiry there, Chair. I'd suggest an extension of time.
Sorry, I do have to say, I'm sure that the, the new national park is also user pays. So.
You said that? No, that's a developer offsets, actually, another inquiry that you've got going.